Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of December 11th, 2018. Roll call?
For Selectman President and Town Administrator.
Pledge of Allegiance. Angela, how would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, announcements.
Mary, you have anything?
I don't think so.
Peter? Patrick?
I have none.
The only real announcement would be, I'll wait for the Board comments, we'll get a little go. Any citizens here for any comments? Come on up, Angela.
Angela Dunham, I'm wearing my Historical Commission badge this evening. While I know that each and every one of us appreciates our first responders, on behalf of the Wareham Historical Commission, I want to thank all of the first responders in town for their dedication to our community. In particular, tonight, I want to sincerely express my appreciation for specific people who responded to a situation that happened a week ago this evening. Actually, a week ago, Sunday, in the middle of the night, Sunday, Monday. There was a, an emergency at the Wareham Free Library. I know Derek spoke about it last week, and you're all aware of it. The library had an HVAC pipe burst. And it happened to be, it would be a disaster in any place, but it happened to be in the climate-controlled storage room. And because of the professional and very rapid response of the fire department and a couple of our municipal maintenance workers, the damage was minimal. It was bad enough, but it was minimal. I want to also give a shout out to our new library director, George Ripley. His first day on the job, he walked in to find that mess waiting for him as he walked through the door. And he was calm, cool, and collected, and made all the appropriate calls, and had everything under control very quickly. But at this particular time, I would like to recognize Captain Mark Rogers of the Wareham Fire Department, and the following people as well, James Brandalini, Tyler Crabb, Matthew Kelly, Trevor Robadu. Lydia St. Berett was the dispatcher for that call. And our municipal maintenance folks, Joe Edwards and Patrick Murphy. If it had not been for these folks, the damage would have been considerably worse. And I want to wish all of our first responders a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. But I want to acknowledge these people because if it had not been for their professional and rapid response, it would have been truly a disaster for the historical community's treasures, the town's archives. So, thank you to each and every one of them, and Merry Christmas to each and every one of you.
To you also.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you for acknowledging those people.
Board comments.
Mary?
I have none.
Peter?
No comments tonight.
Okay, very quickly, we've been a saga ongoing about the Swift Beach Road intersection with Route 6. We've gone through three different tries of trying to do something. The last one was asking for a solar-powered speed sign, which Marion has, if you go down the road farther. Mass DOT turned us down about three days ago, four days ago, I think. Reason being is there's not enough accidents on the road, which is wonderful. And also the speed limit that they, well, the study that was done by Serpent Forest said the speed limit on the road is not high enough above the standard posted limit to warrant anything at all at that point. So I think, I'm gonna make one more try. I'm gonna see if we can get Mass DOT to actually lower the speed in both directions on that road at that intersection. And hopefully with the speed limit dropped, if we still have issues, they can do another study for us for free. Just so you understand, it doesn't cost us anything. And see if the speed limit on the road then is exceeding the posted speed limit by a lot. But that'll be our last shot. If that doesn't work, there's nothing much else we can do. There was an announcement on the news today, which was caught me by surprise a little bit. We had expected Salem on the retail marijuana to open up in about two to three weeks. It looks as if they got their all approvals in place. And the word is, as of right now, Salem could open up this weekend. If it does, it will take some of the pressure off if our retail marijuana facility is gonna open on Monday. So that may help us a little bit. That's it.
Okay, appointments, there's none. License and permits renewals. All right, so the way I wanna do these is we'll just, they're in the agenda, and I'm gonna just move them as they stand in the agenda by sections, okay?
That's fine, so we did last year.
All right, so I move we renew the following year-round retail packaged goods store, all alcoholic beverage licenses for 2019 under provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws. That's under Section 8. And it goes down through...
Section 8A. 8A.
8A, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
One through...
Okay.
13.
13, yes, there's 13 of them.
Is that your motion?
Yep.
Second.
Any questions, the Board? Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Okay, next one, I move we approve the following year-round common vicula, all alcoholic beverage licenses for the year 2019 under the provisions of Chapter 138 Massachusetts General Laws. And again, we're going under B, under Section 8. And it goes all the way through XXXI.
One to 31.
One for 31.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions from the Board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Next is renewal of the following year-round common vicula, wine and malt beverage licenses for 2019 under provisions of Chapter 138 Massachusetts General Laws. That's under Section C, there's two of them, and I move we approve those.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Next is the renewal of the following year-round club, all alcoholic beverage licenses for 2019 under the provisions of Chapter 138 Massachusetts General Laws. It's under Section D, and it's two, there's two.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Next is renewal of the following year-round Veterans Club, all alcoholic beverage licenses for the year 2019 under provisions of Chapter 138, General Laws, and there is two of them.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Next is the following year-round Inholder, all alcoholic beverage license for the year 2019 under provisions of 138, Chapter of the Massachusetts General Laws, and there is one.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by, sorry, motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Okay, the dog hearing's scheduled for 7:30, so we'll move to the discussion with the clerk. Is that okay, everybody?
Yes.
Discussion with the clerk, come on down!
We're passing on eight. It's gonna be next week.
Marion, the handheld one, unfortunately. It looks like the others aren't working right. Just like back town meeting.
Should I start singing?
Please.
You could.
Whatever you like.
Good evening. Marion Silva, Town Clerk. I'm here tonight, at the request of the Board, to discuss moving Precinct 3 and 6, which is now located at Minot Forest School. As we know, we will be getting a new school, so Minot Forest will be...
Torn down.
Torn down. So, we need to move the precincts. And it takes two to three months to do that. You have to notify every single voter in those two precincts personally, postcards. So it is rather tedious.
So is the East School our best choice there?
No, not a go. We walked through there the other day. The, a bunch of the tiles are up, it's in a bit of a tough condition right now. There's some, there's, might be some mold issues and such, so...
It's expensive to use the VFW.
It's kind of our only thing right now, so...
Well, it's my responsibility to maintain the precincts. It is the Board of Selectmen's responsibility to assign it. However, you're supposed to make it as convenient as possible to the voters. And 6 is East Wareham, Precinct 3 is part of East Wareham and part of Onset.
Yeah, and it's right there. I mean, you know, the East School is right there. There's no way to use that at all. We're gonna need, it's three or four months from now before, you know...
Well, how much money are we gonna put into that to get it ready?
That's a question.
Versus someplace else charges us some money. I know that the VFW, I think it was a bit of a traffic nightmare.
It was. Actually, what happened was there were a couple of car accidents because of the narrowness of the road going in. And some people weren't able to judge appropriately. And I guess a couple of cars did kinda like scrape each other.
Yeah.
It's like a thousand dollars for the day or something, right?
Yeah.
That's what they were saying, yes.
So the Elks couldn't do it anymore. I think it interrupted some of their operations.
Bingo.
Right, because bingo, and you can't serve alcohol during an election.
Regrettably.
So that all had to be shut down.
Makes things interesting.
Might help sometimes.
I was gonna say.
So this is, I mean, in a pinch, could you get East up and running? I believe so. I just don't think, I don't know for the poll workers and, you know, for everybody whether that's the best option, so, you know, we can give a tour of it and look through it.
We don't have a lot of options?
No.
Just remember, how many years are you talking before the school is even built?
Right.
So you're not talking just a short period of time. Those precincts are gonna be there for at least three, four, or five years.
Hmm, two and a half, probably.
You're pushing it, aren't you?
I don't think so. No, two and a half is a reasonable number.
That's the projected date for the school to be completed.
Yeah, they, they're pretty fast these days, believe it or not.
Okay, I'll keep my comment to myself.
They've got 90 million reasons to get it done quick.
To get it done, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
But you only talk in a short period of time.
They filled one in Congress, didn't take hardly any time at all, they moved right through it, so...
Do you wanna have sometime, next few weeks, go with Marion and take a look and see?
Yeah, and Marion is bringing this up for, for a while, so I appreciate, you know, bringing it forward. I mean, it's, it's really up to the Board what, where you wanna go with it, and...
I just wanna make sure that if you, the two of you say we can make it work, you know, I don't wanna spend time and find out we can't work in the last minute, have to rush around for something. The only two places I can come up with is the VFW and the East School right now.
I don't think there's anything else, really.
Probably looking at like six elections between now and the time the school's built, so you're talking, you know, six grand if you went, if you decided to go with VFW.
Right, and we couldn't, we don't have the capability of merging into other districts for the time being, right?
Well, the only other possibility would be to merge three with Precinct 2. But you have to keep in mind, there's, there's not a lot of parking unless that gate is open and you allow them to park on the property.
That's the Hammond School.
The Hammond School.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could put three there because three is, houses a lot of Onset.
Yeah.
Right.
So you could do that, and then just worry about finding, and just maybe putting six, if VFW allows us, putting six at VFW, so you would only have that one precinct there. And Precinct 6 is my smallest precinct.
Yes.
Precinct 3...
Three is the biggest.
Precinct 3 is one of my bigger ones.
Do you wanna let this go for a week?
What if we did three at...
Well, four is Shangri-La, right?
No, six, Precinct 6.
Six is Shangri-La.
Is it Shangri-La in East Wareham?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Shangri-La, yeah. What if we put three at the VFW and put six down at Hammond?
No, 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 no. You have to make it convenient.
It's still the same cost.
So you're asking people to come from East Wareham to go all the way into Onset, where three, part of three is already in Onset.
True, but you've got Judy Whiteside coming all the way up.
Yeah, but the point is, is that...
You know what I mean? It's gonna be inconvenient for everybody, no matter what.
Whether we put one there or two there.
It's gotta be inconvenient for the people way down Great Neck as well.
Well, yeah, that's true, yeah.
So...
Although three is the biggest one, right?
Yeah.
Three is my biggest precinct.
I'm okay with Marion's suggestion. I don't know why we have to go out and look at more places or anything.
Well, why don't we just want, the two of you take a look, and come back, and we'll do it the, I think it's January 8th? Is our first meeting in January? I'm mistaken.
What's our drop dead, Marion?
It's gonna be right close to that.
Well, you're talking, like I said, two to three months, because you have to get the cards out. You have to make sure you've notified everybody, so...
So mid-January is probably...
If you did it in January, it would take me February, March to get them notified.
Right.
Why don't we put this back on the agenda for the eighth and see if, the two of you, in that time, if you can't, just let me know.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, we've been getting some good suggestions as well.
Maybe come up with something in the meantime.
Okay.
You gonna build a building?
Yeah.
See how fast we can build that building.
Good thinking.
Good luck.
Yeah, amen to that.
So you don't like my idea of the portable boss that drives up and...
Unless you're driving it.
Yeah, you like the ice cream truck.
I don't think that's gonna work. Have you been watching the news? But anyway, so we'll see. So we'll look at East Wareham?
Yeah, let's see, look at East Wareham, and let's schedule something for next week, if we, are you gonna be around?
No, but I'll make it, I'll make the effort.
All right, 'cause I wasn't gonna be around the next week, so...
No, that's not a problem.
We'll connect. Thank you, Mary.
All right, you're welcome. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Discussion with the Bike Path Committee, are they here? They're not here.
The reason I asked them to come to see us, 'cause I'm not sure they're functioning, whether members are left or not left. They've got a bike path that's been approved for 2023 of about $5 million. I believe they've, I think you've already hired an engineer with the RFP.
I should have awarded.
Yeah, and we need to keep going or else we lose that. And this is one of these things, which is a grant that we don't pay. We've already, I think we've already taken $200,000 from CPA to do the original engineering work, et cetera, that was required of the town spot. So we have no more expenses. We've already spent the 200, basically.
Okay.
So I don't wanna lose this and throw money away.
They were out surveying within the past couple of weeks.
Okay.
So that's what it was.
Yeah, but I just wanna make sure we're, we're there. I'm concerned, we may, if we don't get a response from the Bike Path Committee, we may have to search out and reach out to someone to step up.
All right, so next would be that chapter...
Obviously, there's nobody here.
Chapter 61A, conversion.
Okay, this one here, we've given it to the planning board. They've had well over 30 days, actually, a couple of meetings. I got a notice from last night's meeting from Jasmine that they did not get to this again. So I'm not gonna wait any longer. You know, they have 30 days, they haven't done it, so therefore we have to, we'll basically work on the basis that they have no interest in the town buying the property.
All right.
I'm not going any longer with this.
So I move we, we do not exercise our 61A rights on 3344 Glen Shelly Road.
What's our drop dead on this?
Derek wanted, sorry, Patrick. Derek, at the last meeting, has an issue about they want a small piece...
With the size of the land, yeah.
Yeah.
In this, so he was gonna come back with something to us.
Two things, so we're looking to connect with, unfortunately, this is the worst time of the year to get everybody together, but there's two things. One, the size of the land, pulling out 2,500 square feet from a couple acres. Two is, you know, if we are going to allow that and we're not gonna exercise our rights, we need some exclusive use of that for public safety.
Is it a bog?
Uh, there's bogs, but the rest of that's all upland and stuff. So there's houses on the property and such.
Boggs can be upland too, sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
When they're made, when they're man-made.
I believe we have 120 days.
Yeah, so what's our...
We have a decision, so we're well within our timeframe. You wanna bring this back in sometime in January?
Yeah.
Can you get them to come in and talk to you?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine, I withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Sorry, Patrick.
That's fine.
So I'm gonna make a note that we'll come back at this on June 22nd. That's enough time for everybody.
Okay, next is to designate a Board of Selectmen member to be part of the school negotiating team for the bus driver, custodian cafeteria, and paraprofessional secretary, so on.
I'm gonna suggest that, Patrick, as he's the school committee representative now, that we go ahead and do this.
That's fine.
So moved.
Yeah, and there's one, one thing, and I have no problem. If you want as well, you can designate for the, someone like Doreen, the HR Director, who, to attend the meetings if you can't attend or something like that.
Okay, that's good, yeah, that's good. If, if we have a conflict, I can do that. Okay, that's great. Yeah, 'cause she'd be a good one for that, too, yeah.
I think so, yeah.
You wanna make the motion with her?
I did.
With Doreen as the alternate?
As an alternate.
Oh, he can...
Well, I can just tell him.
They can find, yeah, they can find your name out.
Well, just make it official, that's all.
All right, Doreen is an alternate.
Thank you. Need a second.
Second.
Any questions for the Board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Okay, next is to vote on the ambulance rates.
I believe everybody got a copy of the rates today.
Yes, we did.
So 11% overall raise?
Approximately.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on the rates or anything?
No.
I don't.
None heard, need a motion then?
Move to increase the ambulance rates as presented.
Thank you, give me a second.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Mary. Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
We still have time.
This discussion on possible Springtown meeting warrant articles.
Tony, you have anything additional?
No, I do not.
Mary?
Nope.
Peter?
There may or may not be something coming from the Redevelopment Authority once we have our redevelopment plan for rezoning some of the areas that would, this Board would approve to be as part of a redevelopment plan in a district.
The sign by law, did we send that back to planning? So that's gonna be coming out at some point, we hope?
That's supposed to be on their agenda last night, which they never got to again.
Which they didn't get to.
Yeah. They have five items on their list.
I don't wanna, you know, beat a dead horse, but we've gotta get that thing done and over with. I mean, it does need some correction and...
And they need to get the, they also have to do the pieces that Dave Requena's put in for over a year now, so...
Yeah, yeah, we gotta get that stuff out of the way. That's two years that, where Quine, right, since he came here, he's been trying to get that done.
Well, what we'll do is we'll reach out, reach out to Mr. Buckland and see what's going on.
Are we gonna create a charter review committee?
We actually, we put it up...
Oh, nine, right, 19.
I put it up three months ago, and we've asked for volunteers. Since the newspaper's here, they can hopefully put it back in again, then...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the Board to pass an article or to provide an article to do away with that thing. That was such an absolute disaster the last time, I don't wanna go through that process again.
It's a charter change, 'cause it's a requirement.
It is a charter change. You have to go to the legislature, blah, 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 and all this stuff. It's a pain in the butt, but it's just, asking, asking John Q. Citizen to write law is just a disaster. You've got this set of bylaws where you've got stuff in there that should be in the charter. You've got a charter with stuff that should be in the bylaws. It's, it's turned into a, I won't use the word, but as between the two, I mean, I'd be happy to sit down with town council, the town administrator, the chairman, and the town moderator, and just go through the thing and try to reorganize them all, and just get it done.
I think we'll need to do is check with Rich as well, because once we hit January 1st, 2019, it triggers what the charter says. And the charter change, if you wanna make it, won't happen till April.
Won't happen until after that.
And then the Attorney General has up to 100, up to at least 90 days to say yes or no.
And we can set up a committee with whatever we get us...
Yeah, but once you put them in there, eh?
You know, I think we got two, I think there's a couple of, isn't there a couple of At-Lodge in that thing, too? There's actually a makeup for it.
I know, but...
Last time they were all at Lodge, except for...
Last time they were. I don't know if there is a makeup for that.
I don't think they have to be.
But they were.
Yeah, well, I mean, look...
What's the sanction for not appointing the committee?
We're gonna be stuck with it, I don't know.
A wet noodle?
Well, but, you know, one of, one of the things, too, is you've gotta remember that originally the charter was done by citizens anyway.
That's correct.
And just so you know, the citizens were mad at the selectmen at the time.
I know they were.
Remember this.
Oh, they were.
And they really took a lot of the authority away from us.
They took the money away from us, what, they took the money away, which was the most important thing. They wouldn't get paid anymore. I don't care about that, but...
Wasn't this charter based off of one, the series of other ones that Attorney had created for some of the other towns?
Not sure about that. I know they made a strong town...
It was actually, this, there was a, the whole move for a charter was because the citizenry was pretty angry at the selectmen at the time. At the, just around that time, remember, they were having recall issues and all this stuff going on? They had stuff in the assessor's office, all kinds of stuff was going on. So that's when they started that whole charter thing, you know?
No.
I guess the assessor came after that. But, yeah, there was recalls and so on, so forth, and, and so...
We can put it in.
Since it was problematic, they took a lot of the authority away from us.
All right.
Well, as a matter of fact, you should be grateful, because that's how your job came to be. Before that, the selectmen ran, were three, and they, they were all full-time employees.
And they got paid money.
And they got paid to run the town.
That's a nice charter you got there. Be a shame if anything happened to it.
I wouldn't touch that section, but...
Yeah, okay.
All right, so what we'll, everybody done? What we'll do is we'll check with town council, find out if we have any little problems there because of the timeframes. So let's have Janet put on the list of different articles that we're gonna bring forth. This particular article to eliminate the Charter Review Committee, and see if that's possible. The other piece we need to put in there, as we do almost every year forever now, is again, the mobile homes to be counted as affordable. I wanna see if we come up with a different tact that maybe gives us more leverage. We join it in with something else as far as the bill, and see if we get it into the House of Senate and get some action on it. We forgot that last time around.
All right.
So long as we don't come up with exactly the same language.
Can't do the same thing, because it goes in and it goes in the Rotary File. They just don't even read it anymore.
No.
Okay, anybody else?
No. Next up, any other town business not reasonably anticipated the last 48 hours? Anybody?
No.
Okay, town administrators report you have, well, we can actually, you can have what you need, right?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Unfortunately, there's not that much. We had our department head OSHA training now, since we are now going to be, as I don't know if people know, we are now not just under the DLS, but OSHA regulations will be covering municipalities as well. So we're, we're also creating some leaders for training and such and going forward. So we had Maya in, helping train and go through the department head's safety meetings. Mr. Ripley was, was introduced officially to everybody today, so that was great. Really, there's, we're just going through all the iterations. We've received the budgets from the department heads, been working on those, and look to send a product out pretty soon of the, the first sort of estimate. We're gonna be doing a few one-on-ones. They were scheduled to be this week, but unfortunately, I had a, a conflict. So I appreciate everybody's time in, in rescheduling, and, you know, there, there's not much exciting going on in the world. This is when it kind of dips down. We get to get some extra work done. That's maybe not the, maybe not the, the stuff that blows people's minds, it's just, it's working, so...
Question for, nothing to do with the actual function or anything else with the marijuana clinic. Have they still kept the date of the 17th, as far as you know?
Yes, that's, as of today, I was told that they are 99% sure. They expect to hear by the end of tomorrow.
And they'll do a press release with you or whatever, when you're ready?
Yeah, by Thursday or Friday at the latest, it's not just a press release, they're aiming on a press conference to have the parking company that they've hired also speak to it, and the main is try and get as much information out as possible.
Okay. All righty.
All right.
I think we're there.
Well-
Do you want me to do the hearing?
Can we, you wanna wait, you wanna just finish this stuff up and then do the hearing? There's only a few little things left.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All right, can we just get them out of the way?
Yeah.
All right, so I got a bill to pay Rich real quick.
Yeah, you gotta say how much it is.
15,650, just like it is every time.
Also, put down what timeframe as well.
Huh?
Was it the same last time?
And there's a filing fee of 280, which makes it 15,930.
And it covers what time period?
And it covers professional services through 12/2018.
Make everybody happy.
All right, anybody?
You have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second by Tony. Motion by Patrick, any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0.
Okay, and then there's two sets of minutes, real quick, yeah. I move, let's see, who wasn't here? Everybody eventually was here, so it's fine. Okay, I move that we approve the minutes of November 6, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0.
Okay, and then I move we approve the minutes of August 28, 2018, and everybody was here.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0.
Okay, those are all signed and done. If you wanna do liaison reports, real quick, I think you're done.
Tony?
We can go to the dog hearing.
Mary?
Now I'm gonna, fine tonight.
The only thing I had was I went to the planning board meeting last night, and the, again, I'll just mention the four or five further studies, they didn't get to it all again, that's about it.
Okay, all right, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of the Massachusetts Journal of Law, you hereby notified that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, December 11, 2018, at 7:30 PM regarding the dog owners are kept by you. Please find the attached complaint letter, which will, will be lent in evidence later. And I move that we open the public hearing of Ann Taft and Charlie Taft, 24 Glenwood Circle, Wareham, Massachusetts.
Second.
Tony?
Second, fine, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Ellen, yes.
And so if everybody who's gonna have anything to do with this come forward.
I'll swear them in.
Yep, and you can swear them in, and we can get going.
Okay, would everybody who intends to testify, raise their right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Okay, that's it, thanks.
All right.
Okay, if we could have the, whoever the heck you are these days, are you the animal control officer today?
He is. Gotta use the hand.
Yeah, exactly, only one person can speak at a time, this actually isn't the worst thing in the world.
Introduce yourself, please.
Roland Buckness, from the Director of Natural Resources for the town of Wareham. I oversee the animal control department, Cheryl is on vacation, so I'm covering for her. I'm gonna read into record Cheryl's report that she was, she was, she had taken regarding this incident. On November 20th, 9:00 AM, Wareham Animal Control Officer Cheryl Gorbette-Dill received a call from the Swansea Animal Hospital reporting that a dog described as a nine-year-old Chihuahua owned by Robert and Caroline Duncan was attacked by two dogs described as a two-and-a-half-year-old, two two-and-a-half-year-old female Munster-
Munsterlander.
Sorry, thank you, belonging to Ann and Charles Taft of 24 Glenwood Circle that resulted in the Chihuahua's death. It was reported that on Sunday, November 18, around noon, Charles Taft asked the neighbor, the neighbor, Robert Duncan, to come over and see a new generator. Mr. Duncan walked over to the yard. When Charles Taft opened the gate to the fully enclosed six-foot, six-inch stockade fenced yard, the two dogs described as the two above, brown and white, small Munsterlanders, ran from the enclosed towards the small Chihuahua playing in the leaves. The small dog rolled submissively on its back, resulting in the attack of the dogs underside. The attack eventually resulted in the dog's death. Ms. Duncan reported that both men immediately tried to stop the attack, and attacking, the attacking dog's owner did call for his dogs to release as they are trained hunting dogs. The victim's dog was immediately transported to the Swansea Animal Hospital where it died on the operating table. Cheryl spoke with the attacking dog's owner, Charles Taft. He reported that the dogs have managed to get loose in the past on occasions, but never had any issues. He even stated that the dogs went into the neighbor's doggy door without showing any signs of aggression to the dog that was inside the house, and has no reason to believe that the dog would have, would have, the dogs would have dog aggression, or that they should take any safety precautions. He believes that the dogs thought the Chihuahua may have been a squirrel and are not aggressive dogs. This complaint is under the penalty of perjury, complaint signature Cheryl Gorbette-Dill, Wareham Animal Control.
Okay.
Ask someone for one?
Read into the record.
You wanna do it?
Okay, who, who in this, in this matter are the Tafts? See other dog owners?
Yes.
You've heard the report that was read by the Director of Natural Resources from the animal control officer? Do you agree with the statements that were made there?
Correct.
Okay, is there anything you would like to add to that report in terms of what occurred that day?
The only thing I would add is the dogs are two-and-a-half years old, they are bird dogs.
Could you hold the microphone, and could we turn that mic on, because apparently it's not working out there?
Is it working?
Yep, that's good, yeah.
Thank you.
The dogs are two-and-a-half years old, they are trained bird dogs. I had a professional trainer from Plymouth train them for over a year. They're pointing dogs strictly for birds. They got out through the gate because it didn't get closed quick enough. They're very active dogs, they're bird dogs. This little dog, which is tiny little dog, was in the leaves, loose, in a empty lot between the two houses. There's eight inches of natural habitat there, and the dog, you know, it's got two-inch legs, and it was in the leaves, and evidently, they thought it was a squirrel or rabbit, I don't know. It was an unfortunate accident.
Okay.
We paid for their vet bill at Swansea Animal Hospital, which was $2,125. We've been over, we've talked with them, everything seems to be okay with them folks and us, and they plan on getting another dog. It was just in a very, very unfortunate accident. We're devastated. We hunt with the dogs, I have pictures of the dogs, pointing birds, they graduated from puppy class. They went to Petco for puppy class, they're not aggressive dogs. They sleep in our bed with us, they play with the grandkids. It was just an unfortunate accident.
Okay. Well, let's hear and see what the Dunkins have to think. Identify yourselves by name, and then you-
Gotta give them the microphone, please.
Yeah, if you pass the microphone over there.
These are friends of ours. Robin and Greg Goodband, Hatchery Lane. Yep.
Our Dunkins aren't here, though.
The Dunkins are not here, so we've come in support of our friends, the Tafts, to say that we've been around these dogs for two-and-a-half years, and we have found them to be very loving, affectionate. We've seen no ever signs of any aggression against-
I would just like to add, they play with our dog all the time, we have an English setter, and they play great all the time, so no signs of aggression.
Okay, thank you, so we don't have the-
Dogs?
No, that, that's fine. Do we have a recommendation from the animal control officer?
This was a, we feel that this was, situation was also stemmed as a, just what Mr. Taft explained. I, you know, like, we do have to, we have a set of precedents on the animals that do attack other animals-
Yep.
And do cause harm, humans, pets, we've had other pets that have been injured and killed by dog attacks as well of someone else's property. I, I, I do have to say that sitting on the side of speaking with some people that do have hunting dogs, I'm a little concerned that, I, I'm not sure if the dogs did actually release when they were ordered to. Just if they're a pointing dog and it's supposed to retrieve, why would they have gotten to that point of being more of an attack position, so, I do have a little bit of a concern on that. However, I mean, you have a very quiet neighborhood, like the report states. Mr. Taft has almost a seven-foot stockade fence around the yard, it is fenced. You know, this does lead up to just a mishap, the dogs can get out. With the attack, I'm gonna leave it up to the board to make the decision on what you'd like to do.
I can ask a couple questions, okay. So first off, the, the owners of the dog aren't here.
Yes.
No, the owners are.
The owners of the dog that was killed is not here.
The deceased owners are not here.
Okay, so-
It's my, excuse me, it's my understanding, the dog, they euthanized it.
Euthanized, okay, all right, but whatever, for whatever purpose, the dog is, is gone, and they're not here to represent themselves. So it's kinda hard to take any information or any testimony from there, so we don't know what happened. The one thing, though, is that their, their dog was loose as well, right?
Correct.
So it wasn't on a leash or on its property or anything of that nature either.
Their house, our house, and then that.
And yours were coming out, ran out of the enclosure when you were inviting this gentleman in to look at, whatever. So you're obviously friends as well.
Absolutely, we just, we got down reading leaves.
We have a block party every year, I bet how our dog went in the doggy door. Over there, the dog went in the doggy door, ate their food and-
Gonna have to find them dangerous.
You know, in view of the fact that-
Big block, what's for breakfast?
In view of the fact that they're not here, right, it would be my opinion that, that we just, that it's an unfortunate accident, and we just deem it that. They do have a six-foot fence around their yard that they keep the dogs in. I don't see why we should do anything more than this.
I like, you know, we, we have attacks, I mean, my personal feeling is, is we do have, nonetheless, we do have an attack on a dog.
A loose dog. The dog was loose.
It's still loose, but the dogs have shown that they, that they are, in my estimation, at least in this instance, that they've shown themselves aggressive to another dog. I'm not sure I buy the squirrel defense, in any event, the dogs aren't here to cross-examine, so.
I am not so sure of it.
I, I think that they, in my opinion, I think they should be deemed dangerous, and the usual conditions should be imposed, which shouldn't be a big issue for them, because they already have the fence, and it's just a matter of walking them on a leash outside of the yard, except when you're hunting, I don't mind, I don't mind, you know, a provision that allows you to hunt with the dogs if they're off your property, but that's, that would be my suggestion.
Well, that won't stop what happened. If they ran out the gate again by, when he opened the gate, it wouldn't, it wouldn't stop it from happening.
No, but it allows this board to take another sanction should this happen again, because people have to have responsibility to be, have control over their dogs regardless.
Tony, you have any questions?
Well, I was thinking that maybe we're talking about leash or some kind of a runner. Even though there's a fence there, maybe the dog should be on a runner, even behind the fence, just in case, at least for a period of time, I don't know.
That, that-
Well, we have done that tethered.
Yeah, we've had it, we've had dogs tethered.
Mary?
I, I don't know whether it warrants it or not, I'm asking a question.
I would have to say with this breed, it's not a very common situation. I think, where these dogs are professionally trained, you know, some of the things that we did in the past, you know, with other cases where dogs have attacked other animals, we have gone through the steps of muzzle and leash. One of the other options was that we, that the owner provide proof of insurance of the dogs on the property, you know.
Well, that's just a homeowner's policy, so that's-
Standard, you know.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm really on the, on the feeling of this should be a neutral finding at this point. I, I do think this was a, just an unfortunate turn of events, however, you know, looking on the fact that they did attack, I do agree with Peter that there is, you know, that is a sign of aggression. Just seems a little too much on that end of it, but like I said, I think we're really at a, a loss on this one for where we wanna stand on it. Like, I don't feel comfortable going through the, the extent of these regulations that we imposed, but something just to make sure that we're, um, there could be potentially another situation. This is a residential neighborhood, there are other dogs, there are our neighbors, there are people that walk that neighborhood. So I think we can come to some kind of reasonable terms on this one, I think.
Yeah, I think I agree with that, we have, you know, with a lot of these dogs, we have a problem until, we don't have a problem until we do have a problem, and something's changed, so. I think we do have to deem the dogs dangerous, I mean, they're already enclosed with a bigger fence than we usually have most animals, and yeah, they, unfortunately, it resulted in the death of another animal. And I had this happen in my own neighborhood, two little girls came over to borrow vinegar to color their Easter eggs, and their dog got off the leash and attacked my cat, and it was just an accident, it wasn't, there was nothing malicious, so. But I still think we need-
I think at this particular point here, we're probably gonna have to ask that they're, when they're outside the fence, and out, they'd be on a leash, which is required anyways. I mean, if you have them hunting somewhere, it's out of our jurisdiction at that point, out of the town, but I think for right now-
I take them to work with me every day.
Understand, but I'm just-
And they're on a leash when they come out of the house into the back of the truck, into a kennel?
I think we just specify that, and we'll see what happens, and just hopefully we don't have to see you back here again.
No, you won't.
Yeah.
Because the decision-
We're heartbroken as well as-
I know you are, we can see it.
Well, we understand, the fact that the deceased dog owners didn't show up means something as well.
You know, to say how sorry we are, and the last thing they said to us is we don't want this to be anything, we want it to be like it was 8 o'clock Sunday morning again.
Yep.
We feel the same way, we just, I know we're heartbroken, and we're heartbroken for their dog, for my dog, for him, for Robin and Dennis, for everybody, it's just, it's awful, it's terrible.
Okay, all right, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Tony?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Ellen, yes.
All right, so I move that we deem the dogs dangerous, and that we impose the restriction that they must remain inside this six-foot stockade enclosure, which they already have, and that if they're off, out of the property, they have to be on a three-foot long leash. Do you wanna impose the muzzle?
You sure three foots?
Three foot is what she says, yeah.
That's normal.
That's what she, that's all they allow, yeah, that's what the provision calls for. So, and then they usually want them muzzled.
Yeah, I don't think you need a muzzle at this point.
We don't need the muzzle, it's up to you guys.
If they're on the leash, it's, you know-
Well, typically, the muzzle requirement is for people where we don't have the confidence that they can control the dogs.
I don't have that issue.
Yeah, I don't think.
You look big enough to control a Munsterlander.
All right, so the leash, the leash is three foot long, and, and that's the provisions, okay?
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll go with that.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Mary, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0.
Thank you, I just wanna make a couple of remarks. These people, by taking care of the vet bills, doing the right things, we don't always have that kind of evidence presented before us. Oftentimes, there's, there's an attack, there are injuries, and there's been no responsibility taken. There's generally a blame game that goes back and forth. So I would commend these dog owners for taking the initiative and paying for the vet bills, which were not insubstantial.
That was really good, yeah.
Thank you, well, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
All right, move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0. Good night, Wareham, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Good night.